Calling tonight's Noblesville Common Council meeting to order for Tuesday, October 27th. Mr. Chad Connect, our Public Safety Director, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. Start with roll call, Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for October 13th. Who'd approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh, I need to say to from the minutes, I'm sorry.
Did you have say also more?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Good. Approval of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. President, I would like to amend the agenda to consider miscellaneous one and two right after the claims.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjust the agenda, to move miscellaneous one and two right after the claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
President, I'd like to move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second, also a hand vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Let Ms. Lee's catch up. You could. Okay. Now, for comments by citizens who are present, I have no notes if there are anyone, if there is anyone here that would like to, there is a comment card outside the door. Please fill that out and give it to the clerk, please. Council committee reports. I believe there's only one finance this week, right?
That's it.
Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, members of the audience. The Finance Committee met the 22nd of October. A number of these items in, we reviewed in the committee or on the agenda this evening. We spoke for a fairly lengthy period about the extension of the abatement for what was Zevicor and now is owned by Curium Pharma. I'm not going to speak long on that because Mr. Murray is going to be next on the agenda so he can go into the detail, but that does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. Ms. Bennett, our in-house counsel, presented to us an overview of the legal fees and expenses related to the ITM Transportation Museum in the park. You'll see on the agenda, there is a transfer request for $150,000 to cover legal expenses related to that case. I believe you'll hear more about the specifics on that as well, but that also comes to you with a favorable recommendation. The third item was related to funding for golf course irrigation. After many, many conversations we've had about this, it was determined that the best course of action from a funding perspective would be to use part of the reversion dollars that we're going to see from the 2020 budget to cover the cost of irrigation, which will be, as you probably saw in the transfer request, a million, $32,000, which is the second lowest responsible bidder, the lowest bidder we had. Mr. Bennett did his due diligence and found out that that contractor had not done, excuse me, golf course irrigation for about five years. Rather than take a chance on having a problem with the installation, they chose to go with the second lowest and qualified bidder. It's, with that million, $32,000, it will still probably be approximately a million dollars that will likely go into the self-insurance fund for 2021. I believe that's the direction that we're headed with the remaining dollars from reversion from the 20 budget. So, that also comes to you with a favorable recommendation from Finance. Couple of other routine appropriation transfers were discussed. Those are also on the agenda. And the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation. That was the bulk of the meeting. Mr. President?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Connor at all? Is there a motion for the claims?
Mr. President, I'd move to approve the claims.
Second.
A motion and a second. This is a hand vote for approval of claims. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Welcome.
Moving to miscellaneous number one, council to consider resolution number RC-43-20, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Curium U.S. Pet LLC. Mr. Murray.
Good evening, President Hampton, members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. For many reasons, we are fortunate in Noblesville to have economic development interests in our community. Year-to-date, we've had exciting project announcements, partnership announcements, and tonight, we have another exciting opportunity to acknowledge a new corporate user and corporate citizen who is located in Noblesville through a recent business acquisition. So, this item before you, resolution 43-20, this would approve an economic development agreement with Curium, who will continue and grow the operation of a radio pharmaceutical manufacturing business here in Noblesville. As far as the scope of the agreement, Curium has occupied the space located at 14395 Bergen Boulevard. This is the former location of Zevicor Molecular out at, in our corporate campus area. After due diligence and numerous discussions with Curium, the incentive offered in this agreement, as you'll note, is the continuation of the remaining personal property abatement granted to the previous taxpayer and personal property owner, which would allow tax relief to this investment of approximately $30 million in personal property. You also note the schedule in the agreement includes a seven-year tax deduction at 95%. Certain performance expectations are included, as you'll note as well, and Curium commits to not less than 30 full-time equivalents by the end of 2022. This includes retaining all 27 employees from the prior business and property owner. The mix of jobs includes management, research and development, engineering, compliance, and supply chain occupations. As far as wages, they are competitive at $85,000 an average, that is excluding benefits. But the real win here tonight, through, you know, in addition to summarizing these terms and commitments in the agreement, is the team that we've been able to meet from Curium, and we're excited to welcome them to Noblesville tonight. You will find a company that is well-respected and has a global footprint in the nuclear medicine industry. You will find a company that values innovation, integrity, collaboration, collaboration and commitment. You'll find a company that has a focus on the future with investment in new innovative product development, as well as human capital at its facilities. And finally, you will find a company that fits one of our targeted industries of attraction and growth that Mayor Jensen laid out before taking office, and that's the medical technology, medical diagnostic industry. Curium's executive team of Mr. Rick Prahl and Mr. Bob Budenholtzer, both vice presidents of their North American headquarters in St. Louis, Missouri, are here with us tonight. And I've asked that they brief this council and tell us why, who they are, and why they're excited about their business here in Noblesville. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Again, this item comes to you with full support from administration. As Mr. O'Connor mentioned, it also has the recommendation from this council's Finance Committee. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I will welcome our partners from Curium up to the podium.
Any questions for Mr. Murray? Mr. Eyre?
We've previously done an abatement. This just continues that abatement?
That's correct. Same terms.
Great.
Evening.
Evening.
I'm Bob Budenholtzer. I'm very pleased to be in front of you and have a chance to address the council and other attendees. I think here it's okay to demask. Wonderful, wonderful.
Would you say your name again?
Sure, it is. Robert Budenholtzer.
Thank you.
B-U-D-E-N-H-O-L-Z-E-R. I'm Vice President and General Counsel for North America for Curium. And we also have in the audience Rick Prahl, who's our Vice President of Operations for North America. We at Curium have roughly 2,000 employees globally, approximately 360 in St. Louis, Missouri, and then some sales reps scattered throughout the country a little bit, and as Andrew mentioned, 27 here. We hope to grow that a little bit. Curium was formed from two companies about four years ago. I came and Rick came from Mallinckrodt, which is a global pharmaceutical company, and they ran a nuclear medicine business that's global, which I've supported for about 20-something years. And then, but it became non-core to Mallinckrodt, and so it was put up for sale. And a company in Europe by the name of IBA Molecular, also in the same business, but smaller, was owned by private equity, and they put us together, and we both rebranded kind of under the name Curium. So, as I mentioned, about 2,000 employees worldwide. We have about 6,000 global customers. Our products help support about 14 million patients annually. What our products do is they're used in diagnostic imaging procedures, and we have some therapeutic products. We're hoping to move a little bit more towards therapeutic products. But essentially, you take nuclear medicine products, and they get injected into a patient before an imaging procedure, and it helps that doctor, when they take the picture, get a lot better picture and the functioning of organs. And there's different products designed to go to your kidney, or heart, or various organs. So, that's what our business does. It has a fascinating supply chain, and it's, we're pleased that the workforce is a pretty educated workforce, and we're able to pay good salaries. We feel like we're in business to support the patients, but we're also here to help make good livings for the employees that work there and help them support the community. We're very pleased with this, with our investment here. I helped close that transaction in February 28th, 2020. Illinois Health and Science owned this business previously, was having some struggles with it. It fits into our, you know, strike zone, so to speak, for our business with nuclear medicine. It was a great opportunity. We looked at it at one point in time and ended up being outbid, and eventually, the asset came back around, and we were very pleased to jump on it. And so, we've been, it's a great plant, has great equipment out there, it's got room for expansion, if we can come up with some ideas for that. Very briefly, we are owned by private equity. As I mentioned, when we were with Mallinckrodt, we were non-core. We are now core, and we have an owner that says, let's invest. What are some ideas, how we can develop organically, by acquisition, by various means? And so, it's a lot nicer to be with an owner who says, let's do that. We've got ideas galore. We've got smart folks who have, you know, ideas about how we can expand, about who we ought to acquire. We have a gutsy owner that says, let's think big. So, this was part of our thinking. This asset fits in real nicely. We're happy to be here. Been working with a great crew here in the development area and with the mayor. So, we're pleased to be here, happy to answer any questions, but, and we appreciate very much the incentive here, the abatement, and happy that you will work with us to help keep that going.
Thank you. Any questions at all?
I just had one about what excites you about being here in Noblesville area, Indiana, as far as workforce development and being able to find the talent that you need?
Well, you know, we talked about that a little bit at dinner. There is some, you know, educational systems around here provide a good grounds for recruiting. We think that will be very helpful. To tell you the truth, there were some outstanding talents in the staff that we're acquiring in particular. You know, we are in a very highly regulated and very complex business, nuclear medicine. We deal with some complex equipment. We have a cyclotron that's very, our business, it deals with radio pharmaceutical products. They decay in a quick period, so there's a whole lot of complexity associated with it. We are inheriting a great staff there. We think the business is growing, and we can do more with it. Illinois Health and Science probably wasn't the best owner for that business, and we have a global footprint and a good national footprint here. The US business of Curium, while we are global, is the largest revenue producer and the largest profit center for the business. And so, the US is kind of looked at as the top resource for Curium. We're really happy to add on this adjacency. It fits in nicely. In the nuclear medicine world, there is a SPECT products, and it's for a certain kind of imaging, and there are PET products. This stands for Single Photon Emission Computed Tomography, and it's a positon emission tomography. But in any case, the market is moving a little bit more towards PET. The center here produces PET product, so it fits in with our desire to kind of migrate into, you know, one of the more interesting areas and a little bit more profit center. So, we're really pleased with the folks here. We've worked well. We've been able to retain the team. I think they're pleased with our benefits and some of the, you know, they were a little bit of a fledgling group here, getting some support from Illinois Health and Science, but we've got a great HR group and great other functions. So, I think they're feeling the love a little bit and feeling some of the leadership that can, and we're certainly trying to make them feel and realize they're an important part of our business. So, just great folks in a burgeoning area for the nuclear medicine industry.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
President, I would move to approve resolution RC-43-20.
Second.
I'm sorry. Do you still have a comment? Yeah, just to expand on Councilman Eyre's previous question, I just want to relay this is a continuation of a previously approved tax abatement from the prior property owner. So, same term, same deduction schedule. I just wanted to reemphasize that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. So, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your. Thank you. This is number two, council to consider resolution number RC-44-20, a resolution approving reinstatement of the previously approved personal property tax abatement for Curium U.S. Pet LLC and establishing a public hearing.
Thank you, President Hampton. Members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. Again, this is the resolution that would, you know, approve that continuation of that prior approved personal property tax abatement. This is the first of two steps. This is the declaratory resolution for approval this evening. Procedurally speaking, if all goes to plan, you can expect another resolution in the form of a confirmatory resolution at your next agenda, and then we'll also notice for a public hearing. So, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Murray?
President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make, I would move that we approve resolution RC-44-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution RC-44-20. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right.
Thank you. President, I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing for a tax abatement for Curium on November 10th.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the, or establish the public hearing for tax abatement for Curium on November 10th. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Hearing on November 10th. Thank you. Moving to previously discussed ordinances. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Hearing on November 10th. Thank you. Moving to previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 34-10-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 single-family residential to R1 PD residential planned development, and the adoption of a preliminary development and requirements for 7.73 acres at 11411 East 156th Street between Promise Road and Summer Road. Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. As you may recall at the last meeting, this is a request to establish a planned development for this area. The applicant is proposing to not only construct her residence on the said acres, but she also is proposing an accessory barn related to the sales of U-Pick-up flowers and accessory items. She would like to conduct classes onsite as well as tours and field trips relating to flower production and flower arranging. Again, this was sent to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation for adoption, and I will ask if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton? Does the petitioner want to speak tonight? No?
No, not necessarily.
Is there a motion?
President, I would make a motion to approve ordinance 34-10-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 34-10-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Should be eight.
Eight.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. That's the first time I ever caught you. Took me almost a year. Moving on to, we're going to read two of these together. Ms. Yelton, are you okay with that?
Yes.
I'm going to read number 35-10-20 and 36-10-20. So council to consider ordinance number 35-10-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from PB plan business to R5 multifamily residential for 7.8 acres at 17901 River Road, and council to consider ordinance number 36-10-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential to R5 PB PD and the adoption of a preliminary development and requirements for 9.8 acres at 17901 River Road. Ms. Yelton.
Thank you. As you may recall, this was originally a part of the, what is known as the Rivage Plan Development Area, and it did include the former Marsh Supermarket. Their new proposal is to basically do 9.2 acres of that entire development, leaving two acres of it currently zoned PB, which is plan business, to allow for an office structure, and then create a maximum of 290 units of luxury apartments on the remaining 7.2 acres. Again, the apartments are one- and two-bedroom units. There are a few studios. It will be a four-story building. There were waivers from the underlying zoning requirements that were included in the ordinance. Again, the proposed use is within walking distance of Federal Hill Commons Forest Park and some adjacent trails. The office structure, again, will be located to the north and will be constructed at a later date, not during the time of the construction of the apartment. Again, this did come to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation on both of these.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton? Ms. Wiles?
I would move that we approve ordinance number 35-10-20. Since it's a roll, we can do both?
And?
As well as ordinance number 36-10-20.
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinances number 35-10-20 and 36-10-20 and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinances are adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Yelton. You know, you're still there. Moving to 37-10-20, council to consider ordinance number 37-10-20, an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance number 62-12-95, and all amendments thereto regarding Article 9 general regulations. Ms. Yelton.
Again, this was an item that was sent to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption. In this set of text amendments, there are three definitions that we added, one having to do with accessibility ramp, a loading berth, and a service delivery space. The main focus of these amendments had to do with the downtown mixed-use overlay and expanding that district. There were a few other minor changes within that particular section. And then we also added a small portion to the non-conforming signs section.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 37-10-20.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 37-10-20. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 38-10-20, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the costs of certain capital projects, together with all necessary pertinences, related improvements, and equipment in connection therewith. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller. And just warning upfront that this ordinance is directly related to the one coming up after it as well. And this is our second year of a, what I am anticipating becoming a routine cycle where we will be doing a short-term capital projects bond, a one-year bond, that helps us manage the city's property tax rate. As you recall from the budget adoption process, you passed an ordinance that said, you know, we're targeting a $1.10 tax rate. And what this does is it basically provides two pieces of value to the city. It generates some revenue to address capital project needs and allows you, by sizing this bond in a very precise way, to meet that $1.10 tax rate limitation that you've put in place. And the other things to be aware of with regard to this ordinance is the city is simultaneously pursuing both the issuance of this one-year bond and a increase in our maximum levy appeal through the DLGF, and the same thing occurred last year. So the sizing that you see in this ordinance reflects what would be the maximum amount that we would issue for this bond. And if the excess levy appeal that we have submitted to DLGF is pursued, this will be downsized to around $4.7 or $4.8 million of a bond issue. So just be aware of that, that the authorization here is a cap and may not necessarily be the amount of the debt issued. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President?
Ms. Ray.
When we talked two weeks ago, we talked about adding an exhibit that would illustrate what capital projects you were looking at. Is that still going to be done?
Yes, and that has been added to the next ordinance. So I'm going to wait for that to be called. Now I'll reference that.
Any other questions?
President, I would move to approve ordinance 38-10-20.
Second.
Motion and a second for ordinance 38-10-20. This is a roll call. Ms. Lees.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Next up, council to consider ordinance number 39-10-20, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the capital project's short-term general obligation bonds of 2020. Mr. Spalding.
Again, as I previewed, this is tied to the last ordinance. If you issue the debt, you receive the proceeds. And then, again, under Indiana law, those proceeds must be appropriated, authorized for spending. So what this ordinance does is it authorizes debt proceeds of up to the same dollar amount as we referenced previously. But again, if things go as planned with the maximum levy appeal, we won't issue that much debt. And then what was added to this in the amended version is an Exhibit A that you will see. And the Exhibit A lists the planned projects for the, that will be funded with the proceeds from this bond. And I've laid it out in such a way that reflects if the bond is issued at the sizing that we expect, which is about a $4.7 or $4.8 million bond, there'll be about $4.6 million of projects because you do have some interest costs and some issuance costs that you have to cover with the debt. So it lists that amount of projects, breaks down the projects. And then there's another amount here that's referenced that is really just, again, kind of like a contingency that we have in the budget, that if for some reason that levy appeal doesn't come through and we upsize the bond, then what we will have accomplished here tonight is that additional amount that's unallocated will also be appropriated. And then the language at the end basically says that any revisions or changes to this list, either projects or dollar amounts, will be communicated to the council by the mayor. So if for some reason we issue a bond of a larger amount and then determine that we're going to take that additional money and put it toward a capital project that's not listed here, that will be communicated before we do it. So any questions?
President, we need to make a motion to amend as presented, so I would move that we do that.
End it right now?
End it as presented.
Okay.
For ordinance number 35-10-20.
Because we added the exhibit.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending this ordinance? Raise your right hand, please. It is amended.
President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 39-10-20.
We have to open a public hearing first.
Public hearing.
Yep. So I will open a public hearing for ordinance 39-10-20 as amended.
President, seeing no one come forward, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We need a motion, and we have a second and a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Close. Now Ms. Wiles.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 39-10-20 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 39-10-20 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Now to miscellaneous number three, council to consider receipt of summary of fiscally neutral third-quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to resolution RC-03-20. Mr.
Thank you, council members. Sam Barris with OFA staff. This item is an informational report, so no action is formally required by council on it. As you probably recall, RC-0320 gave our office, the Controller's Office, authority to initiate small appropriation transfers that were technical in nature without seeking prior council approval. So this is a quarterly report on those transfers that have been initiated. You can see in your agenda packets a list of these transfers. They were all fairly minor. The largest one was $3,700. Happy to follow up individually if you have questions about any of these specifically, but otherwise, I will leave it there.
Any questions for Mr. Barris?
Mr. President, just a comment, not a question, but this process so far has worked fairly well, and I think it helps the OFA staff just handle these routine transfers, but we get to see them every quarter. So so far, it's working as intended.
Thank you. Moving to transfers, number one, council to consider transfer TA-20-20, an appropriation transfer into the general fund for legal services. Second, would you be?
Thank you, council members. This transfer is, moves $150,000 of appropriation authority from non-departmental contingency to our legal department to cover unbudgeted litigation expenses. And I would refer to Lindsey Bennett for more information about those expenses if you have any questions about them.
Good evening, council. Lindsey Bennett, city attorney, just here to answer any questions you may have on the transfer. Just in sum, it is, as Sam described it, litigation expenses. They're one-time. We will hopefully recover most, if not all, of our attorney's fees and other expert expenses in 2021. So this will hopefully be refunded back to the fund from which it came.
Any questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much.
President, I would move to approve transfer TA-20-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve transfer TA-20-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And transfer number two, council to consider transfer number TC-03-20, a cash transfer from the general fund to the Parks Programs Fund. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. This is slightly different than the last transfer. Last transfer is your more traditional type of transfer, where you're transferring appropriation authority, which is the authority to spend cash in a fund. What this is, is an actual approval for me to transfer cash from one fund to another fund. It was referenced as the, as part of the Finance Committee report that there are projects related to the golf course and irrigation. And what this transfer does is it moves money from the general fund to the Park Programs Fund, which is where we fund golf course activities from. And the amount of the transfer is sized to both ensure that there's sufficient money in those funds to cover those costs and leave that fund with, you know, hopefully a reasonable operating balance going into 2021. And we discussed all that during the Finance Committee. So again, this is a little different and unique. You don't see many of these types of transfers, but this is an actual movement of cash, whereas the other one was just authorizing, moving some spending authority authorization. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? I have one of Mr. Bennett, if he, Park's director.
Brandon Bennett, Park Director.
With this being what we're focused on with the irrigation of golf, what kind of timeline are we talking here as far as implemented, getting it worked on? We're approaching the month of November. Where are we in that world?
Our intention is to, once we have funding secure, to take this to the park board next Wednesday for their award of the bid. At that point in time, we'll immediately schedule a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and then they will the contractor, and then they will try to get mobilized as soon as possible thereafter, assuming the weather doesn't turn on us. In the bid, we requested that the project be completed by mid-May. They've indicated, even as recently as this week, that that still should be a reasonable accommodation that they can make.
Questions? Yeah, Mr. Ayer?
I'm assuming we won't need this for another 35 years after you're done?
I'd like to hope so. It's going on 50 years now. So I would like to think that this will be a long-term fix with the irrigation system. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve transfer TC-03-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve transfer TC-03-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We've reached council comments. Any comments tonight from anyone? You know, me always have one. This Saturday night is the battle for Noblesville, the state championship for girls soccer, 3A state championship. Noblesville plays Garan Catholic in the championship game Saturday night at 8:00 at Fisher's High School. I think that's just pretty cool. We've got two high schools that are located in Noblesville playing each other for the state championship. That's just cool. A lot of good soccer. It started over there on those fields, right? And the youth in Park and Rec fields all around there.
I think when we're another, we'll be able to recognize the state championship, championship team.
They're real close. Right there, one of them. They're not going to play to a tie. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
We are adjourned. Thank you.